So Chief, we all got your presentation, we went through it. Are you gonna be putting it all up again?
No. Oh, don't spoil my surprise. I'm gonna, I'll tell you what I'm gonna do here in a few minutes. It's a cutting edge.
Oh, you're gonna say you have my report. Are there any questions? I'd be cutting edge.
Is Elizabeth joining the meeting?
Should be. We know she knows about it.
Okay. She's usually on this, the first one on this call.
Yeah, she reviews.
Okay, it's four o'clock. Let's call the meeting to order.
Roll call, Mayor. Councilmember Lido.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Note that when Councilmember Lewis joins, I'll announce our Vice Mayor Widmer.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGolia.
Yes. Is there any public, I don't see anyone that might give that public comment. Okay, let's move on to item number three to authorize removal of the city manager's overall change order limit cap.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you recall, back when the project started, we set an aggregate amount of $2 million for change orders for under city managers authority. No single change order over 250,000, and that's combined change orders for the town center portion as well as the library portion. In anticipation of nearing that $2 million threshold in October of 2021 last year, we also, council authorized an increase to 2.5 million to continue to expedite processing of smaller change order amounts. Again, the single change order cap remained, and anything over 250,000 was required to go to the council. Staff's recommending now at this point that the project is completing out. We still have a number of smaller change orders on the horizon that we remove the change order cap, just so we're not running into this having to come back as we approach that cap. But we continue to have the $250,000 single limit. And as you know, there's one significant change order on the horizon. I think I've talked to each of you individually about it. That's in relation to the ERCC system within the Police Department building. And that one is, is causing delay in the project as well as a number of other COVID related type supply chain issues. So we're negotiating with the contractor on that one. That one will be larger than the 250,000 and we would come to the City Council for approval of that change order. And that concludes the staff report. Staff's recommending that you remove the cap.
Okay.
Change.
Any questions or comments from members of the council? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Move that we approve removal of the cap as staff recommended.
Second. Do the roll call, Councilmember Polito.
In favor.
Hello, and that's, that's our Councilmember Lewis. So Councilmember Polito, Councilmember Hawkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here, yes.
Thank you.
Do you know what you're voting on?
I do, removing the cap. I am here, yes sir. Mister Widmer, I wouldn't get any other way. Thank you for checking.
She votes yes on everything.
I'm very agreeable. What do you think?
Vice Mayor?
Oh, yes, yes, of course. I made the motion.
Yes. Okay, moving on into the study session items. The first item is the police annual report.
All right, good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. I actually read the agenda and I think you're gonna have a punishing long PowerPoint coming from some other town department. So to save you from that injustice, I don't have a presentation. I'm gonna keep mine at a high level like I've done the past couple of years and then take your questions. And after that, I'll kind of go over our audits and inspections that we recently completed for 2021 and take your answers and questions. So I am pleased to announce that for 2021 for part one crimes, the more serious crimes, crime in Atherton is down 20%. So I'm happy to report that. For our traffic law enforcement stats compared to 2020, we're way up. And I think for a variety of reasons, my fellow chiefs, we've all been experienced the COVID impacts to 2020, but as we came out of it more in 2021, officers were more comfortable making traffic stops and getting out there and getting back to traffic law enforcement. We did have a data transfer error under the bicycle category. We actually did have 27 verbal contacts and three citations issued in that area. And the same for collisions. Collisions were way down across the county again, COVID related, back up in 2021. But we're very fortunate that only had two serious injury and no reportable collisions. And then as it relates to traffic law enforcement, as I've mentioned before, we are working, our goal this year is to improve different types of enforcement emphasis utilizing different agencies, some overtime and some of our own personnel. Community outreach, that's a really good topic. It's one of our big priorities always, but especially for 2021. So for 2021 going forward, and Mayor, you attended the first one on Walsh Road, is my goal is to do at least one community group meeting during the year, primarily focusing on crime prevention, burglaries, of course, and any other topic. So since the Walsh Road, I've had three other community meetings. I've got booked, I've booked out till May and getting some really good traction, some very good feedback from those community meetings on the efforts that we're doing. On alarms, and I know that from my last community meeting on the Zoom, there were several questions about alarm, alarm monitoring and how we handle that. Our alarms were compared to 2020 way up again, COVID related. We're still receiving at least about four or five per day and officers are responding about three per day. So continues to be a problem. We continue to work on it. In response to the question for alarm monitoring, I have consulted with Sherman Hall, who happens to be an expert in this area and some others. And so we are looking at other ways for residents to connect except for landline or cellular connection for ease of connection and maybe more efficiency.
If you're saying you're, you're still getting three false alarms a day?
That the officers are responding to probably three or four. It continues to be a problem, you know, in 2020, I guess a positive of COVID because most people were home. Our alarm stats were way down, but it's a, it's a, it's a constant. We get a lot of false alarms in the morning when people are leaving for work or school and we get a lot in the, in the afternoon as well. So with that on that overall report, I'm happy to take questions or concerns that you may have.
Questions or concerns, George?
I just have a comment. We produced this in, in print form and it's got a lot of extra information in there. And one of the thoughts in doing that, we just did a few of them for the council for this meeting, but one of the thoughts in doing that is as the chiefs out and about in the community, taking some of these reports, the printed version to these community meetings to hand out to those that might be interested in having them. They're good. It's a good PR piece. It's a good informational, educational piece with respect to what the PD does and the various things that they accomplish over the year.
And this will be posted on our website. And I promised for next year, my goal this year was I wanted to get this in an Athertonian publisher format. I'm not a real fan of the PowerPoint. So that's definitely something we're gonna work on. So we have a much more professional looking piece to push out.
Bill?
Yeah, so Chief, first off, it's a good report and I, and I like the audit report information as well. So I appreciate what you've done there. You know, there were a couple, if you're gonna print this out in, in large volumes to hand out or have at the, at the front desk for people to get or when you go to community meetings, obviously there, you know, my recommendation would be some of the charts were very, very detailed in text and maybe you could just put them in PowerPoint. Plus, there were a couple of spelling errors in there, so that would be good. One thing, I think it was on page 29, if I remember right. But you know, you say you want to make us one of the most secure communities. And I think your goal should be to make us the most secure and safe community. And so, you know, it's just a little nit, but you know, people will pick up on that and I believe that that is your goal. So just thought I'd bring those up. Thanks.
Right, thank you.
Other comments or questions? Chief, I would recommend that you put page numbers on it. At least the handout I got didn't have them.
Understood.
Diana?
I just want to congratulate you on the community outreach. I, I listened in on one of them and I thought you did a great job. So I just want to say kudos to you.
Thank you very much. So on the audits and inspections, I know it's a lot of data to kind of go through, but just on a, on a high level, you know, to audits and inspections, I think for any organization, any company, but particularly law enforcement are critical and essential to make sure, number one readiness, number two, from a risk management standpoint, to reduce liability and to reduce risk and to improve officer safety. And my mantra there is what gets monitored gets done. We've come a long way from our body camera audits when we first started. Our vehicle inspections or officer inspections, just making sure that when you go to reach for something in the back of your car, that it's there and available and that we are 100% ready to serve our residents.
Right. There are two additional reports coming, Chief. Is that correct?
Yes, the evidence and property audit just landed on my desk yesterday. And then as we can continue to seek objectivity with our Flock audit, we have a captain from Redwood City Police that will be coming over next week to take a look at that and do our annual audit with our ALPR data.
Chief, on the alarm versus false alarm page, you and, I, I had two comments. One is, you gave great information. It, it wasn't clear what the number of false alarms were because it just said the total alarms processed. I, I assume that they are almost all false, but you didn't indicate exactly what the number was. So that might be a change. Also, you indicate the new alarm permits, which I think is good, but I'd also like to know what the total number of permits are. That, that isn't included.
Yeah, so when we first started tracking back to 2019, we had 261. And then in 2020, we had 315. And I just confirmed with our radio dispatch supervisor, the number of 41. We're pretty convinced that with the large outreach that we did the last two years, that the majority of people that were monitoring have the alarm. So we only had 41 in 2021.
No, but my, my point is that those are the new permits that are, that, that residents are applying for. You don't give anywhere the total number of permits. My, my guess is that it's, you know, close to 2,000. I don't know how many it is, but we, we don't, we, we the annual number is good, but I'd also like to know the total number.
I will find that out. Good question.
I'd be shocked if it's 2,000. That's almost every house in the, in the town.
There's 2,500, somewhere in the high thousand, thousand, but probably below.
We're probably getting close to 1,500. And then just so you know, the process, every time we go out to an alarm, if we have no information in our system, that means they don't have a permit. And the process is that a letter gets sent to that residence, revising, they need a permit and that we need their information in our system.
They need a permit whether it's monitored by us or monitored by ADT or somebody else as well.
Correct.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you, Chief.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to review and discuss the town's master plan projects and the financial planning model.
Mayor DeGolia, I just wanted to confirm that there's no one on the public either that wanted to comment on that. I don't think so, but I don't recognize that 425 number.
Okay, I see that number just popped up. Is there any public comment on the police matter?
I don't see any, Mayor.
Nope, I don't see any. Okay, so we're moving on to the financial planning model.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You've seen the staff report before, so I won't go through that part. It's got a lot of information in there about other various capital projects and Robert Avadia is on the phone to address any of those as we want to stick them in the financial planning model spreadsheet as we go through it. But what I mentioned we would do is bring the spreadsheet up. We'll go through some basic information on it and then we can start plugging numbers in. I did meet with one member of the council, so I have a sample from that particular member of the council that we can also discuss and make modifications with. And then I met with another member of the council who printed out the spreadsheet and we went through some of the numbers there too. So with your permission, I'll share the screen with the spreadsheet.
Okay, but let me, let me just clarify. So the purpose of the spreadsheet is we can plug in numbers and sort of see how, how they come out and, and play around with it, right?
That's correct. No, no budget decisions being made. You're just giving us some, some priority focus of some members of the council.
Right, but, but in addition to that, there are some policy issues included in the staff report where there are, it's not clear if they're recommendations, but staff has identified a number of different items that could be considered. And I think that it would be wise for the council to in general go through those items on the issue of, so let me just try to list them as I see them in, in order to help organize the conversation. And, and I, I definitely think the goal of plugging in numbers and playing with the financial planning spreadsheet is a good thing to do. So I, I'm, I'm only suggesting that we also address the policy issues, which I understand plugging in the numbers could get us to. But as I see them, these issues are, there's one about what we want to do about CalPERS in general and the UAL, and there's a good deal of discussion on that. Secondly, there are some items that are suggested from the bike and pedestrian master plan. In specific, there's three and council members may have others. And I think we should get to that. There are items recommended with respect to the drainage master plan. Staff has identified four. And again, council members may have others. And finally, there are items that are suggested with respect to the park master plan. And I think there are five different items there. And, and there's a fair amount of additional discussion of things like, you know, that, that are high level issues, road improvement plan, green infrastructure plan, facility replacement. So these are suggestions. And maybe before we start to play with the spreadsheet, we should go over these general items and that'll give some direction to what we want to play with on the spreadsheet.
Happy to do that. On the, the bike pit master plan one, we start, we'll go to the pension at the end. The bike pit master plan one, what we had done is had Public Works go through the master plan and identify from that master plan the top three projects that were identified in there that could be undertaken. And those are the three that are listed there. There's the Grand Boulevard one, which is basically El Camino Real through town, connecting Redwood City to Menlo Park through Atherton. The Selby Lane Bike Lane Improvement to provide class two bike lanes. And the Atherton Avenue Bike Lane Project from Alameda de las Pogas to El Camino, a class two bike lane down that route. The numbers that are listed there are listed in $2,014 because that's when we did the bike pit master plan. There could of course be other priority projects as the mayor indicated that the council may wish to pursue. We don't have specific dollars for those to plug in, but you can tell from the, the size of some of these projects, we can make a swag in terms of what some of those allocations might be.
Okay, so let's focus on this bike and pit master plan and, and see what the priorities are. And there may be some general overall comments. I, I know Bill has his hand up before we started to divide this into categories. So Bill, if your comment is general, that would be fine. Or if it's on the bike pit master plan, that would be fine. If it's on any of the other specifics, why don't you hold it until we get to that item?
Okay, yeah, I do have some comments for later on, but I have some comments, you know, right at, at the very beginning. But you know, I know we're just talking, right? But I think the talk needs to turn into some things such as, you know, if we decide we're going to do anything on the UAL. I think, you know, I think we should be making a decision, pretty much making a decision to go do it as opposed to just talking about it. And, and
Let's bring that up when we get to the UAL.
All right, on the bike pit, then I'll give you my comments on the bike pit. Okay, so on the bike pit, there are some things that we've sent to the Transportation Committee with regards to where we would like to have, you know, the automatic speed lights, you know, like we have on Watkins put to, to help control the traffic. Also of the, of the items that were missed, listed on there, the one that is in most need is the Selby Lane. That is the route to school. We've talked about it for a long time. You know, we need to be aggressive about trying to get a grant, but we need to put it in our budget and I, you know, and so you know, when I was working with George, I, I had it in the out years and I think that we can cover it with what, what we put in when he shows you the, the ones planned. But, but I think that that is of all of them, that is the most pressing issue. So that was my, and that's from the bike pit committee.
Great, thank you. Bob?
I'm, I'm assuming that this Grand Boulevard thing is, is not something we can, we can undertake on our own if we can undertake at all. I'm not familiar, I haven't sat in any bike and pit meetings, but technically, we don't own the El Camino. I can see we can do what probably anything reasonable we want to do on the Atherton Avenue and Selby Lane, but explain to me what the deal is on this Grand Boulevard thing.
Well, you're right. That one would take a considerably longer period of time to complete. There's a lot more involved agencies that are required. Caltrans just being one of them. And Robert, do you have anything more to say about that one?
Yeah, just to, to give council an overview of the generalities of the project. And what that would be is in essence to provide bicycle and pedestrian facilities along the entirety of El Camino tying into Redwood City and the county at the north end, which both have sidewalks. Don't currently have bikeways, but Caltrans has started a project initiation looking at putting in separated bikeways on El Camino in Redwood City that we would ultimately tie into bringing those down to Menlo Park. And so the generalities are in addition to putting in sidewalks, but it would be a separated bikeway. And to do that, we'd be dropping a travel lane in each direction to provide the needed space for it. And concurrent with that, we're all, I think, aware of all of the drainage issues along the El Camino. So we'd like to address some of those issues as well as implement green infrastructure and other improvements on, on that route. And as was indicated, it is not a project that we would undertake alone. It would require a substantial amount of outside funding. But the good news is that the project is not only listed on our master plan, it's listed on the CCAG master plan as well as the Caltrans District Four master plans.
Well, thanks. Elizabeth? You're muted.
So I would, I'm so glad you said that at the very end. That's why I raised my hand because in case you didn't indicate that countywide, there is an initiative to, along El Camino to create protected bike and pit access. And this is not just something that Atherton would be kind of going out on their own to do. It would be, you know, joining in the rest of the cities along the corridor as Director Robert Avadia said. So I just wanted to make sure that that was very clear. And it is something that if we don't want to take a look at it now, we really need to keep it on the radar because there are so many opportunities for people to ride bikes. But I do agree with Councilmember Widmer that I, I starred Selby Lane as a really, really, really critical one, as well as I think Atherton Avenue, because that route is traveled a lot by bicycles and, you know, cars go pretty fast down that route and there's just not room for bike safety. So that's my feeling about this, these three opportunities.
Hey, Diana?
I wanted to ask a few questions about the El Camino one. So that one has already got green light from both Redwood City and Menlo Park. So if they build this thing, will it be like a big bike path and the second it gets to Atherton, it'll just like stop? How, how does that work? How do they do that? That was my first question, how it will actually be implemented if it doesn't stop? And then you mentioned about building something. I didn't know what you were saying because of the water issues and stuff. And I wasn't clear how it was gonna be. Is it on the side of the road or down the middle of the road? Do you, do we know what they're?
Just fixing.
So I'll tackle the, the second one first.
We're not dealing with the drainage now. We're dealing with the bike lane issues.
Robert Avadia indicated that with the improvements with the El Camino Real, that the drainage issues could be addressed, correct?
Yeah, so basically, I'm gonna say most of the streets that tee in on the west side of El Camino, there are a lot of ponding areas and there aren't really any drainage, there's no drainage infrastructure. As we do improvements on El Camino, as improvements are done, it's important to make sure that they're not affected by that the drainage issues there. So with regards to terminus of projects, as I had indicated, Redwood City and Caltrans are working on the separated bikeway project to the north. It's unclear exactly where that's gonna terminate, but it's a specific defined project in terms of what their limits are. And though we envision it coming into town a little bit, we're not quite sure yet. They haven't developed the design yet to say whether it's gonna be a bike lane in that area or if it's gonna be a separated bikeway. So they're in the process of their initiation. Right now, sidewalk in essence terminates at our boundaries. And that's both on the north and south sides. So from Menlo Park, you have sidewalk up on one side of the street, I think on the east side of the street of the Watkins. And then after you pass the Lloyd and Park neighborhood, it picks up again in Temteo County. And then on the other side of the street, the sidewalk goes in from Redwood Street and it terminates pretty much at the city limit line. So it doesn't, and we have bus stops on El Camino that have no pedestrian access to them.
Yeah, but when you're on a bike though, it's kind of interesting because if you put this bike thing up and everybody's gonna go, I'm just really, in anything, we at least need to figure out how it ends at our speed so that doesn't, you know, all of a sudden you're on the road going. So if you're encouraging people to use that corridor to bike by building this fancy new bike lane and then it ends at our town, we have to, you know, we're gonna have to address what happens with that regardless of whether we build it or not. The second, the last question I have is on the, the 5 million number that's there. Is that assuming all the rest of the money's coming from Caltrain? Is that just our portion toward it?
Well, I think I, I put an asterix on it and the, the numbers there are what were in the master plan. It is old and stated back in 2014, so the numbers are, are low. Additionally, just looking at it, it's our, it's our impression that it's not just low on an inflation perspective, but it's, it's really low. So I think the total project may be closer around 15 million or so, but what's important to do with the project is with the project is get, if we were, if it's going to move forward, to get designing started, to get real estimates on what those costs are going to be.
But do we know what percentage Caltrain has paid for the Redwood City portion, the Menlo Park portion? So what I'm trying to get at is, can we guesstimate what if we were to participate, what would our, what is any of that five million be covered by them?
Um, so what we would have to do is apply for grants or seek funding through other avenues to support the project. Um, because we know that we can't tackle that kind of money on our own. And whether that's through uh, programs at Caltrans or other federal or state grants for bikeway improvements. Um, those are the things that we would have to seek to fund it.
Okay, thanks. I I've got a comment and then Bill. So I I think I have a different perspective on this than other members of the council. I I am absolutely opposed to this Grand Boulevard proposal. Uh, I don't believe that Atherton residents support it. I've heard from many Atherton residents that are opposed to reducing the number of lanes on El Camino from three to two. Uh, I I like, if we could put bike lanes in at least on one side without reducing uh, the lanes from three to two, uh, that's worth looking at and figuring out uh, how to support it. But uh, I, there, there's, I'm absolutely opposed to reducing the the lanes from three to two. I I think it's the wrong thing to do, and I don't think that Atherton residents are going to support it. Uh, unlike El, uh, Menlo Park and Redwood City that have grocery stores and businesses in their community, everyone in Atherton has to travel to at least one of those two communities. And um, they're, I think they're highly sensitive to increased congestion on El Camino. So um, I think that we should fund the Selby Lane uh, bike lane. Uh, we should at least begin to look at what the real cost would be now so that we can assess it. Uh, I don't know that there would be any possibility for us to get grants for that. Of course, if there might be, we should apply for them. Uh, I think staff is focused on that, but given that it's a hundred percent an Atherton project, uh, it may be tough to uh, get get grants, but I I think that's the priority. The Atherton Avenue Bike Lanes, I think, is something we should hold off on for now. It it's mu- much more expensive, it's going to be more disruptive. And Selby Lane goes right to the school and we need to protect those kids. Bill brought his hand down, so I will assume he's not asking a question or comment at this time, and Diana's got her hand up.
Yeah, I have a question on what you were just talking about in terms of the Selby Lane. How do, is there any in that project, is there anything to address this, how the school of kids, El Camino Real, right there, we have no light, we have occasional guys with the signs, the walking guards? But if we build a bike lane, will any protective stuff for kids crossing with their bikes be added to that, or is that part of that?
Uh, maybe Steph wants to respond to that. We we've certainly looked at the issue of of a a light at Selby Lane. We've had lots of discussion about it. We've decided on every time we've we've addressed it not to do it. But I don't know.
What happens when the bike lane goes right there? And now you've got even more kids on bikes at that corner. That's all I'm saying, if that's thought through.
Okay, Elizabeth?
So I guess my question would be, following up on uh, Councilmember Hawkins and Willian's comment about uh, the intersection at El Camino and Selby and the dangerous crossing uh, to Robert Ovadia. Um, is, has there been any uh discussion or analysis done to maybe put a um, Hawk Beacon, uh, you know, a pedestrian activated um, system there to make it safer?
Um, like you say, I don't think that there's been discussion of a Hawk Beacon. I do recall that there was a study of the intersection done um, or it was being worked on before I joined the town.
Or a stoplight, for a stoplight, right?
It was out with a stoplight and with the community meetings that had happened uh, with our residents, with uh, North Fair Oaks residents and discussions with Caltrans, if I recall correctly, the um preferred solution was to extend the median islands a little bit, allow left turns from El Camino to the two side streets, um, Selby and uh, E Selby. Um, but to restrict left turns from Selby to El Camino, so it would reduce conflicts. And um, it would include some crossing improvements, but not as more Hawk Beacon.
No, I I was in all of those meetings when we met with the um, communities on and city manager was there with us and we did discuss those various uh, options of reconfiguring effectively the traffic flow of that. But what I'm saying now is, you know, um, even even with those reconfigurations, it was not a a totally safe uh, environment for um, children to uh, cross over.
Um, the Hawk Beacon, um, Councilmember Lewis, was an option uh, that was on that list of options that Robert was talking about, that was done, those meetings you're talking about. It was on there, uh, but it wasn't the favorite option.
I don't think people had really gotten used to the Hawk Beacon idea. And I think there are so many Hawk Beacons now that it's kind of a ubiquitous kind of a thing. People are more uh, uh, because I don't even think we had even had our Hawk Beacon up yet. We were talking about it.
No, you're you're correct, so if it was brought up again, maybe. Yeah.
Okay, Bill?
Yeah, so if we're, if we're talking about, you know, crossing lights and things like that, uh, you know, I I think a Hawk Beacon might be appropriate. However, since it it, that area is joined by another jurisdiction, then we need to get them involved and we need to get them to also put it into their funding profile as they wouldn't be paying for half of it or whatever, so.
There's, there's, there are two other jurisdictions. There's the county and the city of Redwood City and us.
I think it's only, I think it's only the county. I don't think the ri- city of Redwood City is at that intersection.
No, I think, I, yeah, I think it's just North Fair Oaks section or, but anyway, regardless, regardless. Yeah, we need to get, we need to get them involved and and then also if we're going to write for a grant uh, for Selby Lane, which I fully support. Um, I I realize the bike lanes would be one hundred percent in Atherton, yet it it would be used for transporting children from other jurisdictions that perhaps are not as uh, well off as Atherton. And that may give us a, you know, a a chance to get some grants and gra- grant funding if we get them to participate in in the in that, so that's, that's it, so thanks.
Good point.
Yeah, I I I want to support that. Uh, I think that uh, the idea of including a Hawk Beacon along with the bike lanes on Selby could make that entire project look more interesting for grant purposes. Uh, and the county now has experience with the Hawk Beacon uh, down uh, El Camino Real uh, on the north, towards the north side where they have a Hawk Beacon. And we have lots of experience with ours. So uh, I agree that this is uh, something that would be worth considering. I I think it would be a big improvement for Selby Lane and and given the composition of that school, the inclusion of it with those Selby ba- lane bike lanes could definitely make a grant more interesting. So that, I think that's a good approach for us. Bob?
Well, just real briefly, I I feel like we're we're wandering here a bit. Think the issue is are on the bike and pedestrian master plan, do we want to put some money into it and which project is a priority? Seems to me you all agree Sel- Selby Lane's the priority, but I don't think we need to desu- design it at this meeting. I think we need to say, yeah, we we want to fu- start funding that and get it done. And whether that includes a Hawk Beacon or wh- what it includes, we're not going to get that. We shouldn't even be attempting to discuss that, I don't think, at this point, at this meeting.
Good point, Bob, good point. Okay, well, it sound, let's move off it. It sounds like there's approval to focus on the Selby Lane matter. We we don't know what the cost would be, but we can assess that.
Uh, the next one is the Drainage Master Plan, and again, staff went through the Drainage Master Plan and identified some top priority projects. Again, in twenty fifteen dollars, uh, that could be undertaken by the town with the recommendation being a focus on the um at Atherton Channel portion of the upstream of Alameda de Las Pogas, uh, the channel slopes and the bottoms of the channel. Um, and there could be additional ones that, as was mentioned earlier, that the council may suggest, such as the drainage right there at Stockbridge and Almond Roll and Cuscalusa, uh, and as well as drainage in other areas of town that have become the source of complaints uh, when they flood. Uh, tossing those out as potential priorities and staff could put numbers together as part of the C I P and and begin to move some of those forward.
Bill?
Yeah, so um, of course, all these things are are high dollar value and and I I agree with trying to start picking them off. Um, but I do feel that, you know, right bef- you know, we got a forecast that says it's going to rain and on Middlefield across from the high school and and uh, on, uh, down along E C R out in the Selby Stockbridge area, you know, we put up flooded signs and and some residents have come to this meeting and and complained about how they've gotten flooded from the water that comes off there and and, you know, goes over into the, up, down their driveway and and, you know, Mr. Rogero, for example, you know, got flooded and had a substantial amount of costs associated with it. I think I understand the reason that this happens because th- the drainage that was there at one time got blocked off for whatever reason. And we don't have documentation of how that decision was made and why we can't underdo it. But but I think it's important for us to have that project down here. And uh, you know, maybe, maybe it's, you know, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, maybe it's a million. But I do think that, you know, our residents want us to to get these small things done that that are important. And 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 we look foolish, you know, fo- forecast for rain, bingo, here comes the signs. Yeah, it really does look stupid.
I still have a sign at the corner of Alejandra and uh, El Camino that says flooded.
It should come down March fifteenth. That's the end of flood season.
All right, so it's intentional, okay, great.
October fifteenth to March fifteenth.
It's supposed to rain, it's supposed to rain, by the way, next week.
Okay, Diana?
I was just going to ask if when we talk about each of these items, if you don't mind sharing the screen so that we're all looking at the same thing at the same time. Because I've had to switch over to go back and look at the items we're talking about. Yeah, that's all I was going to ask. And wasn't there something about we have some obligations on drainage since we didn't do our card and field? Can you explain that?
Uh, yeah, Robert can tag onto this as well, but that's part of the Green Infrastructure Plan. Uh, we are required to, practically now, because we did not do the water capture project. Any major road improvement project that we undertake, we're required to address the green infrastructure component of that and implement green infrastructure along those routes in particular areas. But Robert, do you have anything to add to that?
Um, just minors, we are currently in the process of um getting our permit renewal for stormwater um, for uh, from the State Water Board. And as George indicated, the requirements are related to that permit are changing. And so we're still waiting to get clarification, but as George indicated, certain roadway projects um, that create or replace impervious areas um, will trigger stormwater treatment. Um, and so there's uh, we're anticipating an updated draft permit in the next month or so to give us additional clarification. Um, and so that's everything from roadway reconstruction projects to roadway widening projects, um, including the bikeway projects might require the installation of green infrastructure. Um, so uh, we have uh, a pilot project that's currently under design to do some green infrastructure on Middlefield Road. Um, and then we'll be bringing another project partnership uh, opportunity to the council shortly.
Okay, um uh, so my comment is that just not, not on the green infrastructure, uh, on the channel-related items. We do have this uh, channel organization that we are the board of. Uh, and I would think that any projects that we're doing related to the channel will uh, start with that organization, with the Channel District. Uh, I know that we discussed this, I think, after we did the major work that we did on Marsh Road. Uh, and we've had a meeting of that cha- as the council, we've had a meeting as the board of the Channel District since then. But we haven't done a lot of discussion of that, and I think that anything that we're doing on the channels should be addressed from the Channel District, or at least we should have a discussion about that, because it, the work on the channel was the obligation of the district. Uh, I don't have a particular opinion about which of these items, if any, are urgent to do. And I guess my thinking about what we want to do on the drainage, I I I'm very aware of the problem at El Camino. We've talked about that a lot. Uh, and my understanding is, is that part of that problem is the drain that exists that goes into Redwood City was plugged up. And um, I'd want to see that drain opened, and I'm not sure what work there is related to opening that, but I think that should be the priority and and any, any cost related to that would be the priority for a drainage item in my mind. Uh, Bob?
Um, well, you already touched on my my first question, which was isn't there a Channel District and that's not just us, and is this the total bill for these things? And how much of it is ours, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? But more importantly, and 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 maybe to to the point that you and Bill both touched on, I see flooded spots on the El Camino, I see flooded spots on Middlefield. I I wish I was seeing more right now, but um, when it rains, we have flooded spots, and it seems to me those are much more visible and um uh, important to the citizens. I have no idea how, what the the real need here on these channel improvements are. So I, and and yet they're listed as the priorities in the staff report and not these things that keep coming up every time we have a big rainstorm. So I I I'm not sure that this part of the discussion, I I I think is uh, i- isn't framed right.
Uh, perhaps, before we jump into the next question, uh, I think it will be important for uh, the council to have a good understanding of the Channel District, how big it is, who it includes. We've done a report like that before, but with a couple of new members of the council, I think it'll be important to re-educate on that. The town receives approximately ninety seven thousand dollars a year uh, from the current Channel District assessments that are done each year. A percentage of that is used to address the mitigation measures that were required as part of the channel. Uh, some members of the council may recall, we did a tour uh, of some of that upstream Alameda de Las Pogas, north of that or west of that area. And there is some significant erosion that occurs and that migrates to people's yards, backyards, properties, houses and structures. Uh, and that was some of the mitigation there. Uh, these projects were identified in the Drainage Master Plan because they are life safety projects, not uh, and I I don't mean this in a bad way, but inconvenience flooding uh, like on El Camino or Middlefield. I know they get deep and I know it can be hazardous as vehicles drive, but these projects and others within the Drainage Master Plan were tiered uh, to identify those that had specific life safety threats, should there be a significant flood event that occurs. And that's why they're they're highlighted. Uh, but we can bring that sort of information back for a larger education and discussion uh, with the council.
Okay, that sounds very good. Let's schedule. Okay, that sounds very good. Let's schedule that. Uh, Diana.
Yeah, I was just getting, well, that was interesting what he was just saying. That changes what I was gonna ask, but on the channel stuff. Uh, we're, those are joint projects with other groups. Do these numbers reflect our portion? And are are there some of those required already?
Uh, they're they're not other groups. They're of the Channel District is primarily made up of residents in Atherton. And there's a few residents within Menlo Park, I believe, that also contribute, and they contribute by property assessments. But their water, as it drains from their property drains into the channel, and then all of that water then goes downstream through Atherton. To areas that are not in the Channel District and causes flooding downstream. That's one of the reasons that the Marsh Road project was undertaken by the town. Because when it, when there was huge storms, the Marsh Road area, due to all the upstream water flowing downhill, overtopped. And flooded the residents on the opposite side of Marsh Road.
So, uh, and then to follow up on what everybody else was saying, is it possible to put a number to the local spot fixes of the ones that are. Highly visible and call that something different? Is that not part of these right here?
That's not part of these, though. That's part of the uh, drainage system that actually flows into the county. And some of those early conversations, I think the the mayor and I were part of some discussions with Redwood City in the old council chambers. Uh, where they flat out told us, we we are not gonna cooperate or collaborate with you to open that up, because if we open that up, you're gonna flood our community. Uh, and that's one of the reasons they closed or blocked off that particular drainage along El Camino, whether that was legal or not. We don't know. That's history. Uh, but uh, they're really very reluctant to reopen it because of the amount of water flow it would get. And the concern that it'll flood the housing district areas across Fifth Avenue.
Yeah, this all sounds a little more complex.
Yes, drainage is. I agree.
Okay, uh, well, it sounds like we need to have a meeting uh, to go over the Channel District. And um, maybe we should have a separate discussion about. The El Camino drainage and. Trying to reconcile that issue with Redwood City. I don't think we should try to do that now.
No, but we could, we could put some money into into the priority project list to begin doing some studies and analysis and. Consultants and things like that to get some of those things moving along.
Right, okay, Bill.
Yeah, as we're going down this list, I noted that uh, before we get to the to the park. The very first one on the list was the discussion about the U A L.
Yeah, but we moved that to the end. That'll come after the park.
Well, I would, I I missed us saying that. Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Yeah, that was the city manager's recommendation.
Okay.
Okay, so we're moving on to the park master plan.
So as the council knows, the circulation project is probably finishing its way through design. It will come back to the council for bid and award, and that that project will be underway. Uh, and that addresses a lot of the frontage area of the park and resurfacing the parking lots and such. Uh, but the list that came here is from some recent activity in the park, uh, that we've had some of this in the uh. Maintenance budget, not the capital improvement budget, so it's been done piecemeal along the pathway. That's the construction repair pathways. And then in putting in the decomposed granite as opposed to the asphalt. And then safety fencing, as you know, there's a big oak tree in there. We recently had to move the picnic tables out from underneath that oak tree. And partition that off for safety. Uh, so we're talking about installation of some permanent safety fencing around that tree. That's a small number that could probably put into the operational budget as opposed to C I P. Uh, parking lot repairs and resurfacing, that's a bigger project. That'll come as part of uh, the park plan going forward. We don't have a number on that yet. And the Watkins Avenue Safety, uh, Watkins Avenue fencing, this was. Uh, to be honest, I think this one actually came from me. Uh, that chain link fencing along Watkins Avenue as it faces the park is just ugly. And it's not aesthetically pleasing, and I and I think we could probably. Recreate that in some beautification project and replace that entire fence. From Watkins all the way up to Middlefield Road and beautify the outer section of the park. So that was a suggestion for that one. And then E V charging stations, that's a T B D number as well. Uh, as the the park, uh, parking lots are renovated, we hope to add E V charging stations at several locations throughout the park. That's it.
Okay, uh, comments from members of the council. Well, I I can give a comment. I I've focused on these things a lot as the liaison to Park and Rec. I think the priority on this list is to do the. Pathway construction and repair, so that we don't have different materials on the pathway. Um, and there are areas, the pathway that are completely broken up, so I think that's an important project. I think that once we've done the circulation project, which will introduce a good deal. Of decomposed granite, that this will make more sense to do. Uh, and and I think it'd be great to include it in the budget for the next year. Um, uh, the safety fencing around the um. Dangerous oak tree is actively being discussed at Park and Rec. Uh, for a proposal, I I I would think that we'd rather have something. That looks good than just uh, construction tape around it, which is what we currently have. Um, I'm not sure of the need for the parking lot resurfacing. That hasn't really been brought up before. I think it's a very expensive item, so I would put that off. Uh, I think that the uh, once we do the circulation. Uh, plan, which will also include the entrance to the park. That the Watkins Avenue fencing is going to make a lot of sense, so that the. Circulation plan will change the entrance to the park. It'll create. A safe walk area that's got a slight curb on it to protect pedestrians. And um, at that point, I I think in addition to the fencing. Uh, that whole little strip of walkway, which is a walking path between the road and and the fence. Is asphalt and um, fairly broken up. So we may wanna look at doing that as well as the fence, but I I think that's a good project. I'd say the priority is to repair the pathway around the park. Bill.
Yeah, so um, you know, we're doing a lot of work in the park right now. And and where there are some synergies to, you know, we're we're gonna redo that front walkway. That's already been funded and we agreed that in last year's budget. You know, that that area and then also the the entrance to the park, so that people are walking, don't have to step into the road to get into the park. So some of this is already being done. Um, you know, uh. The, doing the whole park walkway, yes, I think we should do that over time. I I just can't see us, you know. There are other things that are more important when we start putting numbers in. Um, you know, so I I I kinda remain skeptical to see, let's see what we can do. With taking care of some of these other things that we need to get done. Uh, and prioritize that, possibly when we're looking at things like bike lanes. What doing the design is gonna take a certain amount of money and it and we won't be spending this money in the current year, so. So I, you know, I think that I I agree that it'd be great to have the 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 walkway all the way around the park. You know, the the one point five miles or whatever it is, uh, would be great. Um, but I, you know, I I hold off waiting until till, you know, understanding what else we're gonna fund. And what the timing would be and because, I mean, maybe we could do it, maybe we can't, but. Um, so I understand you're saying that's a priority. I I agree with the priority. I just don't know if it's a priority for this year. I guess that's my comment.
Other comments? Um, ju- just to respond to that, I I think that that's a fair comment, Bill. I I I don't have. I don't think I have disagreement with that, uh, but I do think once we are into the circulation plan, we're gonna have a better sense of. How much of a priority it is, and I'd like to be able to reconsider it, so I think if. Assuming that the the circulation plan is done by this summer, which is the game plan. Um. You know, th- this would be appropriate to put in the budget for next year. Uh, if we wanna do it, so I think we need to have a further discussion of it. I do think we'll be able to focus better on it once we're into the circulation plan, but given the timing. I mean, we could always consider it on the budget, when in in at in the budget timing, and if we decide not to do it this year, we can put it off till next year. We've done that with plenty of things.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. And and many projects, as the council knows, do go over multiple fiscal years, because there is. As Councilman Woodmore noted, a design component, a review component, a bid component, and then an actual. Construction component, and that that takes multiple years in some cases, depending on the size of the project.
Okay, uh, I don't see any more questions on the park. Uh, Bill, Bob.
Yeah, just real quick, is the purpose of changing the asphalt out for decomposed granite just to set aesthetics?
It's it's aesthetics and deterioration, and there's some tree roots and things like that that cause. Uh, issues along the paved pathway, and with D G, it's a little easier to manage.
So there is a bit of a safety issue, because there's some areas from the where the asphalt is uh, not safe for elderly.
Yeah, and the back, and the back of the North Meadow, and then sometimes along the front, the frontage. Uh, by the athletic field, so those areas get, uh, the roots poppin' up.
Well, uh, and and we should fix it, and we're not talking about, I don't think an obscene amount of money, it's just that. Asphalt wears over decades and decomposed granite pathways are gonna wear over years, so. I, you, I I wasn't sure whether the, you thought that through and. Whether that's what you wanted, and it might be worthwhile. Um, may- maybe it. That the, it's that much better a surface for for people to enjoy. I don't know, but it's not, it doesn't wear very well.
Yeah, it has a different maintenance schedule required and cost. Um, moving on to the next section there on the list was the Road Improvement Plan and and Green Infrastructure Plan. These are kind of a tag team together. Uh, as you know, we've got about seven hundred thousand that we allocate every year as part of the, you know, the gas tax and other things within the C I P. But we have a required maintenance of effort, uh, that is, is. We're running up against, where we've gotta spend some significant local dollars in addition to that seven hundred thousand for streets and roads. And as Robert Obadia indicated, uh, whenever we do these street and road projects now, we're also gonna be required to tag on. The green infrastructure along those same routes, so they sort of go together. Uh, Mr. Barone, do you happen to know what that number was for the maintenance of effort? Did you look that up? You just muted yourself.
I had it right, sorry. Um, it was about one million ninety eight thousand is our M O E.
Right, so allocating about a million dollars each year would would allow us to maintain the additional seven hundred thousand. Uh, as well as our million dollar allocation each particular fiscal year.
Bill.
Yeah, so uh, yeah, in my plan, I had had a million dollars in there, uh, and that would cover both the green infrastructure as well as the streets. To get us up to that level. I think it's important that we we do that, and we had been backing off on some of our street maintenance over the years. So in addition to the seven hundred thousand, which was already shown in the operating plan. Uh, adding the million in there, I think, uh, is is a good idea and keeps the money flowing from the uh, from the state. So that was, that's my opinion. I I agree with the the city manager and the and the finance director.
Well, good, can, I I'd like to know what the million dollars is gonna be used for it. That sounds like a lot of money to me, I.
So it's um, what what it does is it's part of the town's pavement management program. Uh, and staff goes through every year and assesses the various different streets in town, what their conditions are through those visual inspections. And historic improvements and determines whether they need a full overlay or a uh, just a slurry or just a patch and seal. And Mr. Obadia can go in further detail than that than I can, uh, but he's gonna produce a report uh, to me that I'm gonna share with the council sometime soon. That includes how that process actually works. Uh, and how they make those selections of the various different streets, what the pavement condition index is on all the different streets in town. Uh, Mr. Obadia, anything to add?
Uh, no, just to piggyback on that, I, we pick the treatment based on the condition of the roadway, and so that's why. Pretty much every year you get before you uh, two to three projects, one related to uh, the street overlay, which we grind out. Uh, a portion of the asphalt and replace it with new asphalt. We have a uh. Uh, pavement repair where we dig out um, probably about four to six inches deep worth of asphalt. And replace that so that we can take care of potholes and other failed areas, and then we have our slurry seal project. Which applies a new surface coat to uh, as a crack seal and surface coat for um. For roadway to keep them in a, in a better condition.
And and every year after we do those projects, we do receive a number of phone calls throughout town saying, hey, why didn't you do my street? Why didn't you do my street? It's in a bad condition. It's far worse than the condition of the streets that you're doing. So there are many, many streets in town that probably are in need of some attention.
Plus, we need to add the the green infrastructure.
Yes.
And even if we don't touch a street to redo it, you know, there are some areas where we need to do green infrastructure. We have an obligation to do that. So it's it's lumped into the million dollars that I, you know, I suggested, so, and that the city seems to uh, agree with, so.
Okay, uh, Diana.
I I have a naive question. Uh, all up and down Stockbridge, P G and E is tearing up the entire street. And they've left uh, grooves and cuts and all that. Do, how do we coordinate the rest of our city streets with what's being done by these by these vendors? Do we control over that at all, or how does that work?
Uh, I can highlight that a little bit. I mean, when they have major projects, they reach out to us and let us know. Um, and so it's Cow Water that's been doing the water main replacement on Stockbridge. Uh, they finished up their first portion, which ran, I think, from. Alameda de Las Pulgas down to, I think it was Selby. And now they're working on that second piece, and so as you'll, if you go through that upper piece, when done. Um, they do, we do require a significant amount of pavement restoration associated with that trenching. And then for these long linear projects, they also slurry seal the roadway, so they leave it in. Um, in essence, as good or better shape than it was when they come in. Uh, we do not dictate their capital programs for replacement of water lines, sewer lines, or. Um, electric or gas lines, but they are required to get permits from us. We review their plans to make sure. That what they're doing is consistent with what our standards are. Um, but we cannot stop them from doing those works. A lot of them are related to safety, and we wanna make sure that those safety projects get done.
Can we tie the green infrastructure? Cause if we are required to do green infrastructure as we do the streets. Can they be required as they are, cause they're tearing the whole thing up and redoing it anyway? Or can we work with them and put our money toward with what they're doing? So I'm just trying to, I, it's. It seems you've got different people working on the streets and we're not somehow not connected and coordinating it.
Well, we we are, and as we are waiting for the new language on the permit to come out to tell us exactly what is going to be required. And as those things filter down to us, we do pass on those requirements to those folks that will have to comply. But there are, as you indicated, partnership opportunities, and we 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 do look um, to take advantage of those.
Okay, uh, Bob.
Uh, yeah, they just did my cul-de-sac fronts on Ringwood. And I I don't even remember now whether it was gas or water, but they tore the whole street up. It was obscene. But they put a new street back in. It's it's better than it was before. And I saw them do the same thing. I know it was, it, I, again, I don't know whether it was gas. It was P G and E, so it had to be gas. Over um, on on Sanford Campus near the golf course, and again, they. And again, they made a mess, but when they got done, they put down a beautiful new street, so I think that's kind of seems to be standard procedure, I guess.
Yeah, but if we could get them to also do the green infrastructure as they're doing it, and also, I'll just say, and this may be totally naive. If we have any plans to underground, and as these things are torn up, those those could be, they could be putting conduit along the, like that whole Stockbridge could have had conduit put in when it was all cut open. But because it's different vendors, I mean, I just wish there was a logical way that we all work together so that we could, you know, save our money and and use it more efficiently.
Well, they did work together with us on the uh, middle field. That's how we got the bike lanes in. So it does happen, it's just maybe it didn't happen on Stockbridge, but it does happen. You know, Robert did a a good job in coordinating with all the powers that be on when they redid Middlefield.
Yep.
Any further on this one?
Nope.
All right, then we can roll back up to the pension.
Oh wait, you had the facility replacement.
Oh yeah, the facility replacement one, if you recall, we we stuck five hundred and five thousand dollars in the facility replacement fund as a means of creating that fund a few years back. Uh, and the council allocated that toward the town center project, so the fund is now depleted. But it's the expectation that we will either begin the in small increments or large increments over time or increasing increments over time. Uh, put money into that fund to to replace the facilities that we have, not only the new town center and library, which will, you'll be a long time down the road, but also projects that would replace or repair in in large number, the the carriage house, the main house, uh, the the corp yard, the ca- uh, the pavilion. So those sorts of funding as well, and you could start small and then and ramp it up as we go along.
Bill?
Yeah, so when I spoke to the city manager, you know, he said, first off, if we're going to have this more as a, you know, like the the equipment fund, um, so that as thing was where out, we have to replace them, which makes a lot of sense. Um, but, you know, of course, we have to remember, excuse me, that the uh, uh, everything in the in the facilities for the next year or so is going to be under warranty. So there's really not gonna be any real replacement to our expense, so I would I I agree with that we should start funding it. It should be incremental and it should start small and then and move up. Um, I think that that's a worthwhile endeavor on our part uh, to do that. Um, but uh, you know, I I can't see just jumping in and saying two fifty, five hundred K next year and then the year after, et cetera. Let's ramp up, let's start small and move up from there.
Diana?
Sorry, I just, this again may be a naive question. Project like the train station museum? Where do, are they part of the budget at all? I don't see anything about that mentioned. Is that something different?
Uh, the train station project, once it's, once you bid that out and we get the construction estimates back, uh, we would add that to the capital project budget for the next year. So you'll see it as part of the budget process.
Okay.
Elizabeth?
So, um, I have a little bit of a different opinion about the replacement fund. I think that um, we should start it um, as soon as possible because we're gonna need it uh, going forward. And just because some things are still under warranty doesn't mean that we can't start putting money aside for the replacement or the benefit of our facilities. Because um, we never did that uh, in the past. If we had started in nineteen twenty-three, when we first built um, the town center, we, you know, would have uh, not had to work so hard to do fundraising and stuff, but anyway, uh, so that's just my opinion. I think that um, it's uh, two hundred fifty thousand dollars to to begin with, uh, just to start somewhere and put it away. Um, and then build on it.
Uh, yeah, I I'd like to add to that. I I think it's important for us to do an annual facility replacement uh, contribution. Uh, I I think the city manager's point of it addressing the pavilion and the other uh, uh, facilities that he's mentioned here in addition to the town center is right. Uh, I think we should do a half a million dollars a year. I I think it's every.
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with half.
I think it's every bit as important to do this as to put a million dollars into a slush fund for the roads. Uh, I I I wanna make sure we take care of the roads. I think residents want that and appreciate that. Uh, but I think we need this uh, for our facilities. So I'd like to see us put a half a million dollars a year into it, and and I agree with Bill, at some point, we should increase that. Uh, certainly, if we have to do any really significant work on the pavilion or the main house or the Gilmore House, that we're gonna probably exceed that annual amount. Uh, Bob?
Uh, I I definitely agree, we should be setting money aside, but I I did want to point out that it is compared to the roads where we actually spend that money every year, year in, year out. And as Jim Massey said, uh, uh, it keeps the citizens happy because they know the potholes are getting fixed. This kind of falls in a different category. It it will become kind of a significant slush fund possibly at times, so to to say that we should always put in a half million bucks every year, I I couldn't, I couldn't agree with that necessarily. I definitely agree with the concept of putting money aside to maintain our facilities.
Okay, um, and we call it a facility replacement fund. Slush fund doesn't have a great ring to it.
Uh, Rick, Rick Rutt used that term, so I just, I just hung with it.
Uh, all right, I'm gonna scroll back up to the unfunded uh, pension obligation. So, uh, as the council knows, we've got a a large pension obligation out there and an unfunded pension uh, unallocated liability number, that's around nineteen million uh, combined for all of our our pension systems, and there's four of them. Uh, and so we met with, the finance committee met with and staff met with a representative from CalPERS and talked about a hypothetical impact of a three, four, or five million dollar uh, deposit uh, that we give directly to CalPERS. Uh, and it it pulls down the amount of our unfunded actuarial liability, and then in turn, that could reduce our uh, annual UAL payment that comes out of our operational budget. Our currently, we spend in twenty-two, twenty-three, it's projected at one point six five four million dollars that would come out of the operational budget, and that would increase year over year uh, as we pay that down. If we made a three, four, or five million dollar payment, the chart reflects what CalPERS says is, could be a reduction of what that UAL would be. And that saves operational funds, which in turn flow through the budget, as you can see in the spreadsheet, could flow all the way down to our unallocated balance. So that's been the conversation around some members of the council, whether we should do an allocation like that, whether we should do it but hold it on our side and not give it to CalPERS, or whether we should give it directly to CalPERS, and if so, in what amount.
Okay, Bill?
Yeah, so uh, there's actually two, two things here to address. One is the, you know, where should it go? Um, and so there, you know, there's a plus or a minus, you know, people say, well, if you put it in the CalPERS fund and they and they make bad investments, then the, then uh, you know, it's it's gonna be, you know, spent away. Um, and so they'll raise our numbers, but if we hold the money, then we don't get any benefit for it. And then our number would go up if they make a bad investment anyway, so it's the same amount. And so I'm in favor of of putting it down, I think nineteen million dollars and of of just for the 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 purse type debt um, is too large for this organization and is larger than many of our sister uh, communities. Uh, I'm in favor of doing uh, you know, the five million dollar payment, and I and I would like to point out that it's it's an investment that it makes, you know, it pays for it's, it pays for itself over a number of years. In just the five years that are shown here, you know, we're gonna save uh, uh, wh- what was it, two hundred and uh, two million dollars? Yeah, two, two point nine million dollars. So you put five down and you're in, you know, over almost seven or eight years, you're gonna get paid, paid back. If you took the money and you just invested it yourself with the way we invest our money and, you know, on safe and reliable things, we're gonna get two percent on it. That's not gonna give us the same amount of return. And this two hundred and nine million, two point nine million dollars that we will get will be things that we can spend on other things, so. I I think it's, we need to make the the payment. I think that we really need to to do this, and I think that um, you know, it is pays for itself over a reasonable period of time. And uh, and we should make the payment directly into the CalPERS system.
Uh, so I, my understanding of really the essential purpose of this is that we currently have a COP at about a little over two percent interest, close to three percent. And the CalPERS charges us seven percent interest. I don't really understand the CalPERS charge, how that works, so I'd like to understand that. And when I look at the numbers here, I I, my my inclination is to do a five million dollar payment. I think that makes sense. Uh, but I must say, when I look at these numbers, it doesn't look like the difference between a three million dollar payment and a five million dollar payment is as substantial as I would expect it to be. It shows, I'm looking at the twenty-two, twenty-three number. Uh, giving an additional two million dollars only reduces our long-term liability by a hundred and forty thousand dollars. That is less than I would expect. So maybe I just don't understand it, but um, I I I think if we can leverage two percent money to reduce seven percent money, that's a hundred percent in our interest. Uh, okay, Bob? And 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 at some point, I'd like Steph or somebody to respond on the issue of the CalPERS interest and how that works and why the numbers are not higher than they are.
Well, the the numbers are are linear. I I ran the math. I mean, you're you're going down. The first three million gets you from one, six, five, four down to one, four, 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 and after that, you're doing, only doing increments of a million. It works out. But you're absolutely right. You're basically, you're saying CalPERS is i- in essence is growing our UAL. It's, it's been, it's been numbers above seven. It's down to, down to se- seven or seven and a quarter, and it's going to six point eight. But basically, they're charging us that every year, and right now, we have some money in our hands that we don't have to pay back other than sticking to the amortization schedule, and we're borrowing that money at two percent. So from that perspective, it's a no-brainer. I will say this, since I did all this work studying the history of the payments we've made since we joined CalPERS, and there's no guarantees. They could screw thi- this money up just as bad as everything else they've screwed up. But there's also the situation that this is the one thing that we've, of all the things we've discussed here, the one thing we can't walk away from, at least so far in the courts, has been our pension obligations. So it's pay me now or pay me later. I'd rather pay it, I I'd rather use this two percent money right now and hope that uh, we see i- improved numbers better than than what they're projecting, but at least it's good going forward. Um, and uh, Bill did some, uh, Bill and I discussed this at one point. And I'm glad to see that Bill's loosened the purse strings a little bit. He also did some work with George to plug in a bunch of numbers into the spreadsheet, which is where I think we need to go next. And the five million dollars, I believe, is comfortable with the money we have to spend and still be able to work on all these other projects, and I think the spreadsheet bears that out. So the sooner we get to that, I think the clearer it'll be for everybody.
Okay, thanks. Bill?
Yes, uh, I think maybe Robert can clear up the uh, you know, the payment numbers. I've seen a presentation from from CalPERS, and I think that they've made that at the finance committee when they were talking about this at some point, but there's a bubble up and then it comes down and then shoots out, and so um, and that's why the numbers in the earlier years are are, there's not much difference, but then they they start to grow a little bit more. So I don't know, Robert, do you have uh, do you have that chart available that they showed? Or or maybe last, the at the League of Cities, but I did, I have seen one where they were trying to explain how it's gonna work and the discount and how that's going to apply.
Yeah, I I currently don't have that that chart, but um, it did, they did show when we discussed it with our finance committee meeting. Um, they showed that uh, the unfunded liability, there's a, within our actuary reports, that's probably, I think, page twenty-four or so. Uh, in our actuary reports with CalPERS, there's an unfunded liability balance each year. Um, that shows, um, and that's where the aggregate is is going as far as the UAL payment. It it's not going down as much because of it's aggregating over uh, each fiscal year of the um, unfunded liability, and there's um, it shows uh, the the gains and losses over time, so each year it shows the gains and losses. So that's where the um, UAL payment is trying to capture all those gains and losses over time. But contributing, um, again, the six point eight percent was is built into this um, model, as we modeled the three, four, and five, the six point eight was built into the model um, going forward, and also the um, current rate of return in fiscal year twenty-one of twenty-one point three percent was also built into this model, so those are already included um, in these projections uh, for our UAL payments at the three, four, and five. Um, and again, going forward in the next five years in perpetuity, um, and beyond, it's at six point eight percent. Going from seven percent.
There's other things that that have cha- continue to change, so the cost, yeah, the uh, they've shortened the amortization period, now they're, I think we started out at 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 least thirty years, might have been forty. They're trying to take it to twenty, so they they messed with a lot of things, but this five mu- million dollar payment will will definitely be beneficial to the town.
Yeah, and and the other, the other thing to to, I would like to point out is is that to partially pay for that five million dollars, you know, I am recommending that we we forego the five-year payback because that's at two point two percent, which is a heck of a lot less than seven. So, um, so that would generate, allow us to have more cash in to spend in the in the current years, and we would just end up paying the COP out in the full ten years.
Okay, Elizabeth?
Sure. So, um, I think this is a really important discussion that we're having. Um, and uh, you know, intrinsically and instinctively, I really like to pay off debt, you know, uh, and so uh, paying down the unfunded liabilities um, uh, is uh, is compelling. A- and if you can arbitrage and use obviously the lower interest rate uh, to uh, pay down uh, a higher interest rate, that's even double compelling. However, um, it seems to me that we made um, some significant changes, structural changes in our pension uh, uh, liabilities, obligations uh, several years ago, such that with, you know, our employees are paying more for their uh, insurance and we uh, you know, we're looking at uh, new hires and things that will um, significantly reduce our uh, future pension liabilities. Uh, it if, and maybe somebody can tell me I'm wrong in in that assumption, but I it seems to me that that's what we um, were hoping we were doing at the time, so that over the years, as uh, people like you were saying, uh, retire or die or move, you know, on, and we hire new people that are pension liabilities just don't continue to increase or be at that rate that they are now. pension liabilities just don't continue to increase or be at that rate that they are now. Um, and the one thing that Bob, you said, you know, it is, it's, it's like, um, uh, tossing, tossing a ball in the air. You just don't know exactly how it's going to land because of the people that you're dealing with, the, um, you know, uh, CalPERS, uh, you're dealing with. And you just don't know what they're going to do or how it's going to pan out because they've been so unpredictable in the past. And, and you just never know. I mean, I just would hate to put good money after bad, even though that bad money is costing us more on a, um, interest rate, um, scenario. And I just don't know, I, I guess I, the questions that I've asked city managers, what are other jurisdictions doing? And they are essentially, I guess, uh, not doing anything, or they're doing some bond, uh, measures to, you know, kind of, uh, pay down. Uh, but that, you know, is, if we've got the $5 million and it's just sitting there and it's low-interest money, um, it seems like a compelling idea. It's just that it's not a tangible, you know, our, our residents can't look at an improved street or a new whatever, whatever, you know, something tangible that we invest in the town. And it's kind of an intangible, um, uh, move. I like the idea to, uh, if we're going to do that, uh, and not pay the, uh, COP off, that we use as the longest period of time to pay it back to stretch that out. So I, I think that's, uh, that would be a sound thing to do. But, you know, could we, the $5 million, is, is that a firm number or could it be something less like, um, 3 million, what Mayor with Degoya was indicating seemed to be a similar effect.
So the, the chart, uh, that's in the staff report there did, did show those three different ranges, 3, 4, and 5 million as the potential options.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and you're, you're absolutely correct. We have done a number of things to help reduce the town's long-term pension obligation. But a- assuming that all of the investments by CalPERS are actually realized in the way that they project them, uh, those changes that we made are only going to slow the growth, but they're not going to eliminate the debt. Uh, and that, that's, 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 I think is where the council's looking to, uh, put the $5 million is to try and reduce that actual debt.
Got it.
Um, Bob?
So, so this, Elizabeth, this in essence is kind of us doing our own bond measure, except we already did it to fund the civic center. So we don't have any issuance costs and we're not at the mercy of today's interest rates, which would be at least a half to three quarters of a point higher, maybe higher. So a- and the other thing that, that got me going in this direction is after our first meeting with, uh, Julian, I, I'm quite convinced that our bucket, while our money gets pooled into people with comparable, uh, uh, plans. So there's this big pot of money and it all gets invested the same way. The accounting is very, very, uh, entity-specific. So nobody walks away with any of our money. I, I'm quite convinced of that at this point. While w- we might lose money in a given year or make a lot of money in a given year on the investments. And while demographics are going to change, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It, it affects us, but we don't, we're, unlike the, the fire district, for example, we're not underwriting anybody else. And nobody else is underwriting us. So I feel comfortable that, that, uh, this is debt we got to pay someday. And the sooner we make some progress on it, the more mon- the, the, the better our, uh, annual expenses are going to look, um, the lower our overall cost is going to be.
So can I follow up with you, Mr. Mayor? May I, um?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so the, i- i- it sounds to me, um, Councilmember Polito, that, um, you feel like now is the time, like this is, this is the time is right. And to, to do a big chunk, uh, as big a chunk as we can bite off, uh, and throw it at it, um, rather than maybe some this year and maybe some next year or whatever.
Well, I think there'll be, there'll be next years again. I mean, wh- this, this thing's not going to go away. We'll talk about it again when we have some money.
Mm-hmm.
But we have the money right now, and I just felt the paying it back in the, on the five-year payback plan was foolish when we could put it to good use and, 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 and make some, a, a big chunk of progress right now. So the, the rest of the problem's not going to go away, but I hope it looks better every year.
But we would be, would, we would not be paying it back on a five-year, uh, basis. We'd be paying it back over 10, 17.
Right. We'd pu- we'd, we'd use the full amortization schedule that wa- that was given to us. We had a 10-year amortization schedule.
Mm-hmm.
And, a- and I assumed we would u- use that. Um, basically use all the 2% money we can for as long as we can without coming up with any other issuance costs.
Okay. George, what are you going to do?
Nothing. I'm just waiting on the, the council to conclude this portion of the conversation. I think, given where we are from a time perspective of 535, you've just saved yourself from Robert's PowerPoint presentation for the next one. But if we can go through this, and it is the budget overview, and I know the council's intimately familiar with it, and we can do some catch-up at the next meeting if need be.
Oh, I'd like to stay late and have Robert continue to go on. Love to see his presentation.
I think Mr. Degoya may have another meeting to go to.
Yeah, 6:30, but we No, that's okay. We can conclude it. We can conclude it. I was just joking.
I think we should finish this off.
Yes.
So this is the- George, why don't you, why don't you plug in some of the numbers that you and Bill worked on? Uh, that started with my suggestion of the $5 million bucks and continuing the note. So that people can see how much money is available for other things.
Yeah, why, why don't you, George, why don't you go through the items in the order that we just went through them and, and plug things in? And if someone disagrees with the amount, they can discuss it.
Okay, uh, well, uh, so I'll start that then with the, the bike bed master plan line item here.
Oh, George, start with stopping the payment on the COP. Because that generates a substantial amount of money. And then from there we can start adding other things. But that, tha- that's the first step, you know, that, because that generates the money and then you really know what you're looking at.
Right. So there, there, there's multiple lines to, to fix for that. So if we're going to, this is the COP debt service. This is where we were going to pay it off in the five years. So we had plugged in 1.1 million dollars each year, beginning in fiscal year 21, 22 with the current year budget. Uh, to, at the end of the fiscal year, plug in 1.1 million, put it as a set aside until we got to the last year at the five-year mark and pay it off with another 1.872 million. That's the five-year payoff period for that, for the COP. When we eliminate that and, uh, extend the COP, uh, you're going to see the changes in these numbers down here, which is the, with the available fund balance, starting at the $10 million number. So the next tab does that. So now we've eliminated the COP debt service payment back in the, in the, at five-year mark. And we've also extended the payout of the COP into those future years. So now that $10 million number starts now at $11 million at the end of the current fiscal year and unallocated.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Mm-hmm.
So you took out a million dollars of the COP debt service, a million one. And up there, I knew it's like 800,000, 861,000 is the annual debt service, right? So we're, we're only kind of adding 200 and, um, uh, 61,000 to our.
Yeah, yeah, but we're extending it out to full 10 years. So it, it, it's not free.
Will that go down, the 800?
No.
No.
Oh, that's fixed. That's fixed.
Yeah, that's what I thought, but I mean-
But you're good. You're going to take out the million, the, the line, whatever, 53, and that's money you can now spend.
So that, this money is freed up. Th- this is being set aside in these years in order to, to gather up enough money to pay off the COP in year five, instead of trying to save one lump sum and pay it off at the very end.
But would you still have, would you still have to pay the 861,000?
Yeah, because we're not giving it to them.
Interest.
I know, but-
But we can't, we can't give it to them early.
Hold on.
Okay. We can't give it to them early because the COP has a five-year call. That's the mark where we can give it to them.
Okay.
We extended it out to the 861 in the future years, and we removed it here. So in the net available, that goes up. So now we're at the end of 22 million in the out year instead of 20 million. That changed our operational cost. So then the conversation is, what do you want to do with that extra money that we've got there? And we, as you know, we set that minimum unallocated fund balance down here to a 5% number. So as long as this number in yellow is higher than that bottom number, Robert's going to get, not going to get nervous. So what, uh, I did with a member of the council is to go through and allocate numbers into those various different buckets, starting with the $5 million allocation that went directly to CalPERS to reduce the UAL.
Okay.
So the, the next tab's going to show all of those different allocations plus that $5 million. So here's the $5 million allocation that went to the UAL. And that goes directly in and reduces it from the 19 million to 13 million. That's our UAL that dropped. And that's all of our various different retirement accounts. Uh, and then also what that does is that reduces this chart here, those, that's from that chart that was in the staff report. So our annual operating UAL cost drops as well. So that went down from, these were like a $2 million in this number here, and now it's 1.2 million dollars. The 861 is still continued out. And so now, uh, we started to allocate things into the various different buckets. This bucket here is the road improvement one. That's the $1 million a year that we allocated into the road improvement projects. This is the green infrastructure. This is the 15 or 20% or 10 to 15% we added on top just for green infrastructure, the component of the road projects. This is about, uh, 2.5 million into the drainage infrastructure plan. It would address a couple of projects that were on that list. Uh, but, and it increased it from the 22014 numbers. Uh, so we added that in there. It, it, uh, covers what the council discussed. Uh, but, but we could shift it so that if we wanted to do the, uh, studies for the larger, um, drainage projects up on the drainage channel and then do, you know, some studies related to El Camino or something like that. There's money in there to do that. We can allocate it out. This is just a plug number, not a specific project number. Uh, and then the other number that's in there is 500,000 to park a master plan. That covers all of those park master plan projects that were on that list. We can reduce that number. Uh, but it covers all of the ones that were from that list uh, in the staff report. And then the facility replacement, these are the low ramp-up numbers that Councilmember Whitmer wanted in there, not the, the larger numbers that the rest of the council discussed. But as you can see, there's still considerable space between the bottom line number and our unallocated number. Uh, so if we were to increase the facility replacement fund at a half million dollars a year, you, you would see that that's still pretty healthy.
Well, wha- what is column E and F? What, what years are these columns?
So the $5 million is in the current fiscal year. At the end of this fiscal year, we would allocate that. And then the column C, column F, uh, is fiscal year 22, 23.
Well, I, I, okay.
And then if I could- Those numbers into those years, they may actually go across multiple.
Wait, the current fiscal year beginning in July is going to be E?
Is going to be F.
F.
Yeah.
If, if I could say one thing real quick.
22, 23, you're right. Okay.
If, if I could say one thing real quick, that CalPERS is always behind two years in essence.
Yes.
So I felt that if we made this contribution before June 30th, so that they have to recognize it on this fiscal year's, um, uh, uh, statements, that we've got a better chance of it, of it impacting things in a timely fashion. You'd much rather do it on June, in June than in July in, in the next fiscal year. That's, that's why I was pushing for that.
Okay, so I would support, so that would push the $5 million into column D?
Uh, no, column-
No, E.
Current fiscal year.
Oh, we're in now. Year. Okay, so it's where it, it's, it's where it is.
Correct.
Uh, so the road, the amount for the road improvement plan and the green infrastructure plan is, is more, when, when we went through the discussion, it was a million dollars that was being proposed. And now you've got a million and a half.
So when Councilmember Whitmer noted that the million would include the green infrastructure, that wasn't exactly the conversation he and I had. It was green infrastructure is on top of that million dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not part of the maintenance of effort.
Yeah, I forgot. Sorry. Sorry, George. Mayor Copa.
No worries.
It's Ash Wednesday.
That's right. I'm giving up numbers for Lent.
Yeah, but the point is, there's, there's quite a bit of money left over. We still, I mean, you can play with these numbers all you want, but we're not going to run out of money next year or the year after, or the year after. So-
You just have to maintain the, that, that, you know, that area where we want to keep Robert happy, so he doesn't get, you know, the hissy fit.
Oh, it, it's plenty ahead of that.
Yeah, so the, the one area that would impact that, uh, as you know, is ERAF.
Yeah.
So we've got 2.2 million dollars here in ERAF.
Those are big numbers.
Right, and the current-
Yeah, but that's not what we're estimating in the future. Are, are you estimating?
Yes, wait.
Right, right. So this is a, this is just a calculated percentage increase every year based on the amount property tax would go up because that's what ERAF is based on. But if the state starts monkeying around with it, and we could get less than this. So what we're suggesting in the budget is that we project 1.6 million in those out years. That may not be reality. That may be a conservative number. We don't know. But if we plugged in 1.6, that does have an impact on what the differences are down below.
We've always said we're going to put that below the line. This does not-
It is below the line, but, but also staff has always signi- except one year, significantly underestimated the ERAF amount.
I know, but-
Yeah, there will come a day when we are right.
Uh, there wa- there was a day when you were right.
Yeah.
Well, this V L, VLF in lieu is a problem too. So I mean, we're, we're constantly fighting that, but I, I still believe if you, if you change your numbers there to 1.6 across the board, you, it, that bottom line down there is still, uh, got a cushion.
Yeah, plenty of cushion.
Less of a cushion out here, but still efficient.
Yeah, as we get out there, we're getting close to having the note paid off. So pretty soon we're going to pick up 900 grand a year there.
No, but it had, this, with, the, the principle of the note hasn't been reserved for yet, right?
No, it's, it's fully amortized.
Oh, it's fully amortized.
Yeah, that 871,000 is principal and interest. On the, at the end of the 10th year, we, we walk away, we're paid off. It's just like a home mortgage.
Okay.
And so, yeah, and this isn't a budget that we're committing to. It's, it's a look at where we are, but it, there's some serious discussion on, you know, we need to make a serious decision on the $5 million or the $3 million or whatever that would happen before the end of this fiscal year, which is by June.
I, I, I'm not sure why we aren't putting the facility replacement amount in next year. So I, I mean, I just think it's in our interest to do that. It's-
Is next year. Oh, no, it's not. Sorry. Sorry.
It is now.
And now at that last column there, I know we're getting, we're about to pay off the note, but, but Robert's starting to get nervous.
Yeah, so that's why-
I see him sweating bullets right now.
And that's why we include some stuff.
I am. But numbers are fungible and, and some of these projects are going to go over multiple years and some we may do, some we may not. Uh, so, you know, things will evolve, but, but it, it, we do look reasonably financially healthy.
And, and look at the, look at the, you, look at the UAL in the last year. You're down to six point, I, I mean, I don't believe we'll get, that it'll work out quite like that, but you, you've gone from 19 million to 6 million.
Yeah, and there's a lot tha- that'll happen with CalPERS over this period of time. You know, this doesn't take into effect their increases, their changes in mortality and stuff like that, but-
I know, I know, I know. I know, I know, I know. I'm just saying, we're, we're, we're going to get the bang for the buck.
Yeah, it's better than this.
I, I think this is the right thing to do.
Sure is compelling, isn't it?
I don't know that we need that much into the green infrastructure. What are we doing with 500,000 dollars next year?
Uh, I think that's po- probably going to be part of what, uh, Robert's project's already on the docket. So we have some already coming down the line that we're going to be implementing in this, then that's the additional 250.
Yeah, we were just, we, we were throwing some numbers up that, that we felt might be reasonable, that addressed what are some of our needs are, but also what the state was asking us to do. Um, and, you know, but all the numbers can be changed. It could be, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand. But we need to spend something in that area.
Yeah. That was the goal, just to see how it all looked.
So, uh, can, can I ask a quick question? The very bottom line, uh, where it says C O P and it's over to the other side. C O P is left, yeah, eight million, five hundred. Is that the amount that we owe right now? Eight million?
Yes.
That's our current balance.
Oh, not, not now. That's, that was the original.
We're about here now.
Oh, okay.
Uh, correct. But you don't have anything, isn't there a grant to the S U funding?
Yes, that was, that was a matching 450,000 if we got that grant. We have heard crickets from, uh, Anna S U's office with respect to where this is in the federal process.
I see.
Crickets.
Well, maybe we should press her on that.
We, we, we will, and we are. It's, it's the Alameda de Las Pogas Safety Corridor project.
No, I understand what it is. We definitely want to do it.
Yeah.
Cause it, that, that signalizes Atherton Avenue and Alameda.
Yes.
Uh, I, I'd say in my mind, uh, there, there's a relatively small amount overall in the park. The park is a really critical asset for us. And we, I, I, I liked the suggestion that Bill made in the conversation for a million dollars between the roads and the green infrastructure. So I might make a little change there and end up with a net of a million dollars between those two rather than 1.25 million and move the 250,000 into the park, because I think we need, are going to need to do things in the park as we move along.
The, the issue with that, um, Mayor, is the, that maintenance of effort requirement. So as, as Robert mentioned, we've got about a million ninety thousand dollars or so that we need to spend on roads. And I'm not sure if, we can investigate further, but I'm not sure if green infrastructure on the sides of the roads would count as part of that maintenance of effort dollar amount.
But a million ninety thousand is different from five million, and that shows five million for the roads.
Per year. Per year.
Five million.
A million per year.
He's looking at the.
Over the period of time.
The M O E is, uh, per year.
Yeah, correct.
And what do we get for that, by the way? You could just re- remind us, Robert.
What do we get?
What do we get it from the state? What do we get?
What do we lose?
That they withhold if we don't.
Oh, it's, it's the, we, we lose the road, uh, the additional road and rehabilitation monies, and it's about a hundred and forty thousand um, per year and it grows also. Uh, I would say 140 to, um, 180,000 in the, uh, road and rehabilitation fund.
And is it, are those funds included in your revenue projections?
Not here. They're in the capital projects.
Not, yeah. Correct. Capital project budget, they are.
Okay, Bob's got his hand up.
Uh, yeah, just one, one thing, the, the, uh, every budget cycle that I've been involved in, which now goes back maybe, maybe 10 years, I don't know. Our, our budgeted expenditures have been, our axles end up being si- significantly lower and our income's been significantly higher. So even when we look at these things, the, the, it, apparently it takes some time to figure out how to spend all this money. So when we budget it in a given year, it ends up going forward to other years. So I, I, I think by definition, these, these projections are pretty conservative. Um, a- and, and that should be considered too. Um, I, I also think that, I don't think we should be getting into whether the number is right for park at 500 and drainage at two and a half. Every council person's going to have different opinions and that's what we're going to work on during the budget process. I think the main takeaway here, as Bill alluded to, is do we want to commit to making a calipers, uh, co- contribution this year? And should it be three, four, five million or nothing? And, and that's what I think we need to try and, uh, decide on this minute. The rest, everything else, we're going to play with over the next couple of months.
I agree. I agree.
Well, we've got five minutes to six, but I, I think we should do it.
Five million. I, I move that we agree, we give instructions to, to plan for five million.
Second.
Third.
Uh, what, what we would do is we would bring this back to the council for consideration as part of the, the budget process to make sure it gets done before June 30.
Great.
And we'll, we'll notify cowpers. We intend to do that and, and, uh, and move it forward.
Great. Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Wait a minute.
Sorry, Robert.
One more agenda later. spreadsheet here.
Yeah.
It's okay.
We'll di- we'll, we'll deal with that when Robert has enough time to put on his flight jacket and drive us to the stars.
Right? Yeah, yeah.
Can I ask unrelated question since we're at the end here? Is it possible to take a five-minute break halfway through these meetings? I've never been on meetings that go this many hours without a potty break. So, uh, and so you end up trying to figure out when to get up and go of what you're going to miss. Yeah, would that be, is it, am I the only one who wants that?
I think you just turn off your video and your sound and you just take a break.
Yeah, exactly.
That's what we do in real council meetings. You just get up and walk off the dais.
Okay.
We all know where you're going.
Now we know when you turn off your cameras, what's happening.
Go get a cup of tea. You go to that, yeah. You know what, Robert? I love this cover. I love these pictures. It's beautiful.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. See you later, guys.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate the feedback.